All right, welcome everybody. Let's call this meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see everybody's smiling faces this morning. Thanks for being here. We're going to start with Kim Clauser.
Okay.
What do you got for us this morning, Kim?
About three things for you. And first of all, good morning. I just wanted to bring you up, and I think Steve has something to add to this, but on the driver's license and the insurance. Just to let you know, we had 160 individuals go through the MBR checks. Everybody passed. That's good. And that 160 does not include the sheriff and highway, so we were overdoing it.
So you feel like that's everybody that needs to go through that process?
Right, and they can still go through it, but it's just going to take a little time. So I'm working on a spreadsheet that will be sent to buildings and grounds. And so the individuals picking up keys for a pool car will have to be on that list. And then I think Steve wants that at mileage reimbursement portion.
Right, so remember that these policies about the driver's license and driving your personal car, you need to demonstrate that you have insurance. This all comes about at our renewal of our auto insurance and our risk management insurance. And so this is all about managing risk for the county. So the verbiage in the policies is very purposeful. If you are going to drive a county car on county business, you must demonstrate to us that you have a valid driver's license or that your folks in your office have issued a valid driver's license. Certainly if it's part of their job description to have a driver's license, then they must submit that to Kim to have that checked because they won't be able to check out a county car unless they have done that. If in fact they drive their personal car on county business, they too have to have that driver's license check and they have to submit a proof of insurance to us. So as a department head or elected official, these are part of the personnel policy. And so if you have an employee who does not do that, you cannot let them drive their personal car on county business. And they won't be paid mileage because if they're driving without having that proof of insurance, they're not on county business. So they can't get mileage reimbursement and they can't get paid for travel time because you're not authorizing that travel in a personal vehicle unless they have demonstrated to us that they have insurance. And we've had a couple employees who did not want to do that to demonstrate their insurance to us. So as a department head, you have a responsibility to enforce this policy to ensure that you don't allow them to drive their personal vehicle on county business. Any questions on that? Okay.
Okay. Talking about the budget, salary ordinance, and longevity. The budget, of course, has been adopted by council, so that part is over with. What is not is the salary ordinance, okay? So yes, there are raises. Yes, there is the Earl Newport and council decided to go with the external midpoint, which they've done in the past years. So we'll be working on that. I think that that will end up being adopted in December and then it will be posted on the portal for viewing for everybody. The longevity, I passed out. And if you did not get one, I had it placed on the portal yesterday so you could take a look at it with your employees. But it is the ordinance for longevity. If you did get a copy of it, it's page two. That will give the breakdown for the payments. The payment for the longevity will be added to the first payable in November. So that of course is going to include your FICA and your Perth and other deductions that are required. So we're starting at five years, going up to 25. So that will equal $400 up to $2,000. HR did pull eligibility report, longevity report, October 1, which is called for in this ordinance, and that's been submitted to payable. So any questions somebody might have after that November payable? You know, if there's an error or something, get ahold of us in payable. We took the date of hire that was on cross, and that's what we used to make this report out for payable. Any questions? And I'm sorry to say that longevity does exclude commissioners and council. I said I'm sorry to say that.
Don't worry for me.
Yep. And this and council members, but that's how that looked out. And the other thing I have to review with you, I received a call from Dunn &amp; Associates. Going to send an email out again. But we have been trying to work on this Working Spouse Independent Questionnaire. And we ask you to send that directly to Dunn so we don't have a little man involved saying they didn't get it. We have over 60 employees on our insurance that have not filled that out. It is a requirement and they will pause your claims being paid if you do not get this submitted to them. So they have to know the reason for it. They have to know, number one, on your dependents if there's other insurance so they can have a coordination of benefits with it. Excuse me, Working Spouse Rule is also for proof because we have excluded spouses on the insurance unless they do not have other insurance available to them. So this is a requirement. I'm going to be blasting out some emails, but you don't want your claims put on hold until they get this. It's a requirement. And these forms are on the portal also. And I'll have them attached to my email. So if you can talk to your staff about it and remind them, it's mandatory.
And along with that, the form being on the portal, there were three new policies that were also put on the portal that the employees were expected to read and sign that document that they acknowledged that they have read the new personnel policies. And those are on the portal as well in the handbook commitments.
And I'll be sending out notices to the departments that have not completed that. Just haven't had the opportunity.
Good. Next.
One more thing that's not on the agenda. I found out this week, and I'm sure you've heard of us talk about ImageWorks, which is a standalone imaging center here in Richmond. And they've been around. I found out this week, so some things have changed. I'm talking to Dunn to see if somehow we can engage in a contract with them like we did with ImageWorks. But right now affordable MRI bottomed out. And I don't know how long ago I just found out. There was no communication. The difference that will affect an employee right now. First of all, they are cheap for an MRI. It's under $500. But the downside of that is we don't have a contract. We just found out. I don't know if they'll sign a contract. You must pay upfront for the MRI. So this is the same scenario that if you go there, you'll want to tell them you must have a disc so you can take that disc to your doctor so they do not have a radiologist on staff to read it, your test. I believe they still have the CT scans that are available there also. But it is, you pay them and submit for reimbursement. So you might say, well, how is that going to help me? Well, if you're on the $5,000 high deductible plan, it is going to help you because you've got to meet your deductible anyway. So do you want to pay $2,000 or $3,000 toward your deductible? Or go ahead and do the 500 and have that applied toward that high deductible. But again, I'm going to try to, I'm encouraging Kathy to try to engage in a contract, which simply means they will bill our insurance. But my hopes are not high for that because that's their philosophy is we can offer this cheap by not involving insurance and billing insurance. So it may not happen. I don't know, but we'll try. But that is something that I just found out this week.
All right. Steve, you're on number four here. Deadlines to some deadlines.
Right, so obviously council meets on Wednesdays once a month. We meet on workshop the third Wednesday of the month. Commissioners meet every Wednesday. If you have something for the agenda for those meetings, please try to get those into us the Friday before that Wednesday. There's some things that happen behind the scenes that we've got to get done before Wednesday. A big one is transfers. If you have a transfer request that, you know, if you're a department that falls under the county commissioners, you're going to get their approval and then it goes to the council. But the auditor's office has some behind the scenes work that they have to get done before that meeting. And there's been a couple of meetings in the last couple of months that we get there and there's some confusion as to the transfer and where is the process. So get those to us Friday before the meeting. Same thing for other agenda items. For example, if you have a grant application that you want the commissioners to consider, make sure that Bobby gets those on that Friday before so that we can get those sent out to the commissioners and me and have a chance to review those prior to the meeting. Any other agenda items, please try to get those to Bobby prior to, by the end of the workday on Friday. And...
And a 48-hour cutoff for personnel. So we're not going to do any one last minute. Because again, I think we're just having to drop everything, redo the agenda, et cetera. So the chair of personnel, which is Barry Ritter, has agreed and has suggested on the 48-hour cutoff prior to the meeting.
Please help us make that deadline. So 48 hours being Friday afternoon before a Wednesday meeting at 8:00?
Kind of here.
Okay. All right, everybody clear on that? Questions? Okay, Steve, what's next? Right, the next three items, five, six, and seven are projects. We'll just briefly go through those. So the courthouse front entrance, as you know, is, the entrance itself is finished. You've been using that. Couple of other things in that process that's going to happen. You're going to start putting in the streetlight replacement. That shouldn't affect you as an employee too much. There will be a point in time where they're going to finish those bollards. There'll probably be a short period of time that that entrance, or at least the step part of the entrance, will be shut down for them to do that work and you'll be required to use the handicap ramp. They're going to start soon. I would anticipate it would start this week on the north side of the courthouse where that transformer set is, that they're going to be pouring some concrete and putting a fence up there. So those folks who walk from the west parking lot on the north side of the courthouse, you're probably going to have to deviate your path because I'm sure that's going to be closed. And then the west side where they're working on the bricks, that is entirely areas fenced off. And they're going to be pulling up those bricks here soon. So just be cognizant that you're going to have some path changes as you want to get into the building over the course of the next several weeks. A new project that the commissioners and council signed off on is the west side. This is the west side of the courthouse. This is going to involve replacing the concrete drive that is used specifically, not specifically, but mostly by the jail to bring the prisoners over to the courthouse. They're going to modify that entrance by putting a fence over the cooling tower area to secure that area as well as replace all that concrete. We're going to be putting that out for bids and that shouldn't disrupt too many of the employees coming to the courthouse. It certainly will disrupt the jail as they bring prisoners over for the duration of that project. And then the proxy card policy and project was slowly moving to getting this totally into place. Dale, I think they were here yesterday. Did they finish everything?
They finished everything. There's one door handle that's missing that he's going to send to me. Other than that, the locks have been changed on the main doors now. And I've already run into Mahoney, couldn't get into the health department last night with his proxy card wouldn't work. And it was working before, so I don't know what's changing that if it worked today, why doesn't it work tomorrow?
So is that lock itself changed?
The outside lock is changed now.
And so for Dan and Keys, what's that do for him?
He can, right now, he can go to any other door again.
So the other four doors and five doors still have 21 locks on them?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just in case it don't work. Kind of like, you know, everything works.
Our vaccine refrigerators and freezers are kind of going haywire right now. So they send us alarms when that happens. So for instance, we had one go off last night. Well, we don't always care, our prox cards 24/7 if we're out to eat or, you know, whatever. So key access is my stuff.
So going forward, you know, most of you were issued prox cards that didn't have a photo on them. And now we have this process up and running. So everybody that did not get a photo on your issued prox card, if you are in the courthouse, you will contact Missy in the security office. And she prefers that you contact her by email rather than calling down there and flooding her with phone calls. But the employees who are in the courthouse will get their photograph taken by Missy and she will schedule that with you. So email that to her so that you just don't show up to the place and get your photograph taken. If you are in the annex or the health department, we are going to do those photographs and the same thing. Schedule that through Bobby and don't just show up and get your photograph taken. Probably my sense is for like the probation department where you have a large number of employees, we probably would do those in sections. But annex, health department goes through Bobby, courthouse goes through Missy. There have been several cards that either are not programmed appropriately or they're not programmed at all. Something didn't work. Again, if you read the policy, only the department head can authorize those changes. An employee cannot call for those changes. That must come from the department head. And I talked to Missy yesterday and again, to make those changes go through her. And again, schedule those with an email. Just don't show up and tell her and bombard her with these kind of questions.
Is that for everybody?
Yes.
Annex employees?
Yeah. Alan, does that sound right?
Yeah, if you send an email for a change in access, we'll just deal with it over email immediately. We don't need the prox card. We don't have to see the employee.
And I talked to Missy yesterday and she was okay with doing that.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a form or something that needs to be completed and authorized by the department head? Or is just an email would authorize that? An email from the department head. Okay. And then there was been a question from some of the employees. Do I need to prox throughout the day? Well, if, remember, not everybody has access to every door. So the doors that are locked throughout the day, certainly you have to prox those if in fact you have access to those doors. For the main doors, they are open from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And if you have a prox card that gives you access to the main doors after those hours, then certainly you would prox. But anything that is through regular business hours, you know, 7:00, 8:00, 5:00, you don't have to prox the main doors to go in because they're already unlocked. Any other questions that have come from your employees about the use of the prox card?
Wearing them all every day, right?
Right, once you get the photographs on them and we get that officially complete, they are required to display those.
Steve?
Yeah.
If a card does not function at all, does that fall under Missy's jurisdiction?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Or you've been terminating, we need to.
That would be me, commissioner.
Anything else? Okay, I think over the course of the next couple of weeks, let's take an effort to get the photographs on and get this completely implemented. And remember, if your employee loses it, there's a charge to get it replaced. So make sure they protect it. And if they do lose it, make sure they tell us right away. Either contact Missy or the security office that the card been lost so that we can deactivate that card right away and move it issue. And... And... Okay. Craig, you're actually on the agenda. What do you have for us today? Something important?
Well, kind of. I want to give everybody an update for the government plan for Microsoft. I have been trying to get this done since March. This has not been easy. I spent the last month trying to get verified as a local government entity. We are now verified. But now there is no upgrade path from small business to the government plan, which means we cannot just say, here's more money. Turn us on to the government plan. It is actually an entirely different account. So what that means is we have to release the WayneCounty.in.gov domain from Microsoft and go back to the WayneCo.onMicrosoft.com for a certain amount of time. Add the WayneCounty.in.gov to the new domain. Export everybody out of the old domain and put them in the new domain. The major issue with this is email. I'm working with IOT, PACS, a Microsoft, World Central, and we're trying to get this done in as real time as possible. So instead of a few days, normally when we have a change to the domain, it takes IOT two to three days to make the change. Well, we'll have two changes. So that would mean we would be without email for a week. That can't happen. So I'm trying my best to get that window down as low as possible. I'm hoping for a few hours. That's my goal. But I want to make everyone aware that I don't have a date yet. We've got to make sure all these working pieces are together before we start the process. But I just want to make everybody aware that there could be a certain amount of time that you will not get any email from the WayneCounty.in.gov CO. Of course, the old CO.Wayne.in.us will continue to work. Also, we will be losing SOFOS for our WayneCounty.in.gov email. SOFOS, that's our protection. That gives you a little banner that says, you know, this is bad. That will be gone for the Microsoft account. SOFOS raised that price, $22 per user. So it's almost $60 per user to have that service. So we are looking at what's called abnormal AI, which was promoted by the state, is sold through a state vendor, SHI, and it's only $14 per user. It's supposed to catch everything before you even see it. Obviously, some stuff will get through. But again, I wanted to let you know there will be another change coming to your email. So change, change, change. But I will try to keep everybody as up to date as possible when we get closer to the changeover. Was absolutely not expecting it to be this hard to get to a government account with Microsoft. And then also, I am looking at a password manager. It's come to my attention that a lot of people are using their browsers to save their username and passwords. That is definitely not best practices. That's kind of the digital equipment equivalent of taking your username and password under your keyboard. Very easy to get if we ever did get hacked or compromised. And again, make sure that you are, you know, not using your work email for personal and not using your personal email for work. Do your best to keep those two lives separate. Because if we do get compromised, that could, you don't want that bleeding over into your personal life as well as the pain it's going to cause in your work life. That's my updates.
Gee, thanks. Okay.
Yeah, always something.
Seems like it. All right, let's start with somebody who is not making eye contact with me. Tim, anything to report to the group? Nothing out of ordinary, I guess. Okay, let's just go around the room. No? Just jump up to the table to sit down? Anything?
No, sir.
Dan?
You. November 8, we have the Veterans Day Parade. It'll be the same route as last year, going from 12th to 5th. Lineup will be about 10:30 and the parade will start at 12. For the Veterans Emergency Fund, so back in June, I got an email from a gal at the Indiana Quanex plant. And she was asking for help finding a local organization that their company could, they were doing a patriotic care drive and so they wanted to focus on helping veterans in the community. So I sent her back and said, other than the big veteran service organizations, I wasn't really aware of any smaller organizations. I did plug our Veteran Emergency Fund, explained what we do and what the process is and all of that. And they sent us a $5,000 check, which was very nice. So our fund is sitting pretty right now. So we'll be able to do maybe some additional things for veterans this year. Or, you know, I look at over the winter. It's great timing for the winter to be able to do some additional things, maybe for veterans in need. So I was really happy with that. Then I will be out of the office the 29th and 30th of this month. I'm going to the Battle of Mine to Home Summit. And it's a summit where they talk about issues facing military family, military connected families. They cover behavioral health, substance abuse, suicide prevention, veteran treatment courts, all that kind of stuff. So that'll be a good educational couple of days. So that's all I have.
Any questions? And right behind you is Alan.
Unplugged for the prosecutor's office. We just launched a new infraction deferral program. So what that means for most people is if you are generally a good driver and don't have a bunch of tickets on your record and you get a speeding ticket kind of as a one-off or something like that, contact our office. There is a program that you can go through, including a driver's safety course. There's some fees you have to pay. You don't get another ticket for so long and that ticket can not be put on your record. So there are exceptions. You can't be a hold a CEO. There's some other exceptions. But if you know someone that gets a ticket or if you get a ticket, contact us and we can walk you through that program.
All right. Anything else?
No.
All right. Go to?
Nothing.
All right. Somebody's hiding. Oh, Tara? You can't hide. Nothing? Okay. Commissioners, have anything?
I think so.
Nope. All right. Let's thank you for being here this morning. Let's take a recess and we'll resume our meeting in a few minutes. and, uh, we'll resume our meeting in a few minutes. We are going to go ahead and, and have Kim Clauser, uh, share her conversation with us. What do you, what do you have for us?
I have a proposal that before I go any further, I wanted just to buy in, that you're willing to listen to this, uh, in a degree that I have a contract.
Before you tell us what it is, do you want us to?
I'm getting ready to. I'm telling you why.
I'm gonna wait until you tell us and then tell you whether we agree.
You'll buy in, I think, if you have money. So with our recruitment, it's limited right now, very limited.
The outreach you do, okay.
So we are, we do have a Facebook page, uh, we also have LinkedIn that we use. We're not using Instagram right now, but after talking, that's, you know, not a, a high priority for us. It would actually be Facebook. So it started out with me making a comment to the sheriff because when he has, when they have job openings over in the sheriff's department, they're recruiting their graphics that they use for the job openings are really professional. They're nice and the sheriff's, uh, department, their Facebook page has, I think it's over five thousand followers. We're five hundred and so we need to grow that. I feel like we need more professional graphics and flyers when we have these job openings. And the reason this also came to light, I think we have a very, um, competitive hourly rate and salaries and so I want to help get qualified people to apply for these positions. Uh, some of the positions are extremely hard to recruit. So, and it's going to help on time on the HR side too. Because, so this is a company that the sheriff's office uses, uh, and it's actually, I'm going to disclose all. It's Bill Quinn and he, he has sent me a contract. I'm not really sure of that because I haven't had time to read it. But the minimum would be like two hundred dollars a month. It would go up a little higher if we were interested in him managing the Facebook page and LinkedIn and that would also include trying to get more followers on our page. And the way to get more followers is to get people to share your posts and then people will go and follow it.
Saves fill-ins, company.
Sorry?
Saves fill-ins. On-vine media?
On-vine media.
On-vine media. So I'm, I'm talking to him. We've had one conversation. Uh, he sent me a proposal. I still want to review it a lot more and talk to him. But I didn't want to move further until I see if I have a, a buy-in to move further on this and spend some time on it.
I would support looking into it.
I would too. I mean, that, that aspect has gotten in the last five years is probably, you know, social media advertisement for jobs.
Absolutely.
Exposure is, is critical. Exposure is, at least, everybody's looking to go to now, so. Yeah, I agree. And Phil does a great job for the sheriff's department.
Oh, he does.
And other companies that, so. And he's local, I mean, he's not local, but he is local.
Local, yeah.
But he has quite a few customers in this area, too. Yeah, so he does what's going on, so.
We have a posting on the electronic sign at the courthouse that just says Wayne County is hiring.
Yeah.
But it doesn't even have a website to go to, you know, to look for details or anything like that. So all of those things need to tie together.
You need to work on the...
Happy for you to look into that.
Okay.
And then we can take the next step from there.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay, anything else? And we do need to make a decision in the next two weeks, let's say, on the premium holiday. So make sure you keep us up to date on the financials for the medical plan, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Valerie Schaefer is in the house.
Brought with me today is Sarah Mitchell.
Hi, Sarah.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you, Kim, we're one.
Thank you.
Robert, Steve wants the extra?
Yes, Steve, the extra.
Good luck today.
There you go.
All right, well, thanks for squeezing us in this morning. I've got four things to breeze through in my limited time with you this morning. The EDC board did meet on Monday, and first of all, point your attention to our financials on page, page six. Current month, we were over budget in the amount of $5,597 due to some payments for some contracts, but we're still under budget, $49,075, so still tracking really well for the year. Still managing a lot of projects, there's a lot of money flowing in and out of the EDC. If you look on page 10, under Other Income and Other Expenses, we have a total of $123,500 come in from external sources. $120,000 of that were two reimbursements from the IEDC for the Bank of Miami grants. So the first $60,000, that went back to the city of Richmond, who paid for the first contract, and then the second $60,000 went back into the Consolidated Edit Fund. We sent it back to the treasurer. So just know, those grants have been received in full from IEDC from our first two contracts.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And then we did have an Edit grant that went before the board on Monday. This is for Milestone Trailer Wash. So we actually had two transactions with this company. So owners Greg and Joel Eberlein, who are local, they were there to share plans to build a 9,000-square-foot multi-bay trailer washout facility on 5.7 acres in the Midwest Industrial Park, just on the west side of New Hall and Farm implements. That's been a really small lot that we've been unable to utilize. And so in working with Milestone, they're going to provide FDA-compliant food-grade trailer washouts to serve the pet food industry. So they're working on gaining contracts with all of our big pet food companies here and will be a great addition to our pet food cluster and offering a service that doesn't currently exist here in Wayne County. So we've been really happy to work with them because this will help reduce the downtime for fleets and get these trucks back on the road quicker. So we accomplished two things at the board meeting. One was to authorize the sale of the real estate on behalf of the city, authorizing me to enter into a real estate purchase agreement to sell the land for $82,650. That, those funds will go back into the city's industrial park fund, help maintaining the park. And then secondly, we did offer them an Edit grant in the amount of $26,000 to support them in their startup efforts. This will complement a total investment of the project of a little over $2.3 million, and they'll create roughly six jobs to start paying $20 an hour plus benefits. So based on the nature of the project, they do not qualify for a tax abatement with the city of Richmond. So we felt it was incredibly important to support them through an Edit grant in the amount of $26,000. So would ask for your support in that today.
Questions, comments, motion?
Move for approval. Say.
Motion and a second to approve the Edit grant of $26,000, is that correct? Correct number? $26,000.
Twenty cents, yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Val, are there any unique environmental issues as it relates to the handling of the excess water runoff or created by the...
No, it'll all go into the sanitary sewer. Any other questions? Okay. All right, next on our list, we want to talk about the light MOU that I emailed you about last week. We have not expended all of the funds or even close to all of the funds just yet for the Wayne County Light Program. And that's why I have Sarah here today, in case you have any questions about that. But essentially, we've only completed demolition and reimbursed for eight homes. Nine are in the pipeline, but there are several more, about 23, that are being prepared for demolition. So it's been taking a little bit longer than we expected to get these completed.
And so your request was to extend the MOU by six months, which takes it to...
To June, but...
I'm wondering if we shouldn't extend it to December 31 of 2026. That makes more sense.
And that will help with any contingencies. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. No additional funding, but to use the money that is already committed, which is $390,000 from Consolidated Edit and $390,000 from County Edit.
Yes.
Questions?
This was not our part funded at all.
No, this was...
Going to be, and then we...
We talked about it, but decided that it made more sense, given timing and everything, to be able to commit the funds.
It's the 12th, 31, 26, and it's not a drop dead day, it's just an extension date.
It would be the new end date, but it could be extended again if we need to.
So another consideration is that when we created the, well, when Sarah created the budget, she was estimating that the $780,000 could take down roughly 44 homes. We're well under budget. So if you're okay, if we're leaving it open, can we allow other communities to submit and apply for additional homes so that we can continue to draw down those funds? Or would you prefer us to stop at the estimated 44?
You know, we had some complexities that came into this. One was because it was consolidated, part of it was Consolidated Edit. If you were participating in Consolidated Edit, you could apply. Because it was County Edit and it was part of the Help program, if you were a Help participating community, you could apply. And so there were some communities that were left out. You're proposing any incorporated town in Wayne County or just that same subset? Go back to them and see if they're ready to add properties.
Hopefully opening another round. Yeah. But the latter, only for Help and Edit communities.
Okay. Any concern with adding, potentially adding properties to the list? What's your expectation at this point of how much money might still be available?
Currently, roughly, again, we're waiting on some bids to come in. They should come in the next week or two. But with those, about $200,000 will be remaining.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if we have money still, that we've already allocated for that, we add properties, it makes sense to, so.
So with that change and extending it to December 31 of 2026, are we good with that as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Make a motion to that effect.
I'll put that motion on second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Ron, any concerns on just creating a, making that change to the memorandum?
That or just, I mean, I don't, I think we probably ought to, as far as the eligibility expansion, as far as the timeline, I would not, and it's sufficient, so.
Okay. So we can make that subject to revision to the document for our signatures? Is that, are you okay with adding that to your motion?
Yes.
Second, okay. So with that, are we ready for a vote? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, what else, Val?
Okay, next I'd like to follow up on our discussions regarding the land bank. We've had several meetings with county officials over the last couple of weeks, and it, and I know a concern was the financial commitment by the city of Richmond. Sarah made a presentation to the Richmond Redevelopment Commission yesterday where they did approve the $60,000 for the land bank that we requested. And so we do have year one secure for the city. It's their intention to budget for it then for '27 and '28 rather than asking redevelopment.
Okay, so not redevelopment, wouldn't budget for it, but the city actually would budget for it.
Yes, that's the intention. So while we have a funding commitment, it is only for one year currently.
So is that, that's their intention, that's whose intention?
The administration's intention. And so we would still ask them to sign an inter-local agreement committing to three years.
Okay. And so is the request to, for the county to contribute $60,000 a year for three years if the city also does that?
Yes, it's...
It's not subject to, or it would be subject to the city also following through with that commitment?
I guess it's up to you if you want to make it subject to that commitment. But I would like to revise my request to the county. Originally, we were asking for $80,000 and for you to consider hosting the land bank employee. We're going to rescind that, and the land bank will be established as a standalone organization. And then we would ask the county to contribute $60,000 for three years. And it's our intention to receive a commitment from the city of Richmond for $60,000 for three years. The town of Cambridge City is considering a $5,000 contribution for three years. At this time, Centerville and Cambridge Town are unable to find the funding, but they hope to participate in future years once they get a little more comfortable with the new budget scenario that they're presented with.
Okay. Thoughts? And you're talking about starting January 1 of '26, so that you'd be asking, three years would be '26, '27, '28?
I think the, it was '25 was the... We are still trying to have it to that by the end of this year. So $60,000 yet in '25, '26, and '27.
I had a meeting Friday, I think it was Friday, with Val and the land bank people, and I've, this is no secret to Val, what I'm gonna say is like, I'm not ready to make that commitment. We have a lot of other obligations. The water tower, for one.
Right.
And speaking with several council members, too, their opinion is, they don't want to rush into this. Couple, one. One, because of the water tower. Two, majority of these properties seem to be in the city of Richmond. And we're asked to share 50/50.
Yeah.
So I think I'm just not quite ready, I'm not ready to move on.
Is this the same thing as the foundation?
No.
No, no.
Foundation's commercial.
So the land bank would acquire properties that need work, whether they acquire them through a transfer from the county, from unsold tax sale properties, or whether they actually purchase them themselves, or they're purchased by the redevelopment commission or other sources. So they, a land bank has the ability to resell those properties then with its strings, commitments that you will do X, Y, and Z by, on this timeline, or the property reverts back to the land bank for resale to another potential...
So is it essentially usually bare dogma land? Not necessarily, but...
You know, a lot of what we see is bare lots because they've been torn down.
They've already been.
The hope is that this will intercept some of the ones that have not been torn down and are still able to be salvaged and redeveloped and resold. So the model works in many places. You know, there's some concern about, do we have the home sale market?
Or the private developer?
Exactly. Contractors to actually make it work.
Individuals could still buy the homes from the land bank and revitalize them.
One thing that I talked about, Val, and I'd really like to see some of these communities buy into this, and one of the things that I suggested was maybe reduce our portion, but contribute on behalf of some of these small communities.
So...
To get, for the first year, to get them to buy in so that we can do it. So maybe not reduce our $60,000, but kind of say that's...
So we're paying for Cambridge, Centerville, Cambridge Town, whoever.
Yeah. To kind of get them to buy in, that, you know, say, hey, we're stepping up for you to get this going for the first year to see that...
And then, you know, we would still need to make a commitment on behalf of the county to deal with unincorporated areas.
Right.
I don't have a problem with that. You know, one of the, one of my questions has been, is having skin in the game a requirement for the land bank to operate within those communities? And it probably should.
I would think so. I mean, you want buy-in, right?
You know, at what level?
Yeah.
And so 5,000 across the board may not be the right number for economy to participate with 100 residents instead of Cambridge City.
3,500 and 4,000, yeah. I agree.
Well, speaking within 10, they shared that even though a community doesn't technically buy in, the land bank could still technically acquire and hold property there.
Sure.
But the governmental entity would not have a seat on the board, board of the Board of Directors of the Land Bank to help set the strategic direction of the land bank.
And that's where I think it's important for these small communities, when I say buy-in, not necessarily financially, but participation, you know, that they are, they believe in the project and want to be participants in it. That's what I consider a buy-in, which means they have to buy in, I mean, whatever that number is. So that's where I say, well, maybe we should buy in for the first year so that we can...
I'll have to say, I mean, I'm kind of torn, too, because of a lot of the projects that we're looking at, you know? And then next year, our funding and how that's gonna set for us. Because the water tower project is huge, first of all, and to be able to fund that. However, I like the buying in for the smaller communities the first year. I really like that because, I mean, as, you know, Richmond is able to take care of their portion of it, but a lot of these smaller communities are struggling already, and they don't know how their funding's going to be the next few years. And I believe if we help them the first year, like you'd said, and help buy in for them and let them see the value of the program, I think that will go a lot further and that will be a huge difference for them.
And I think a lot of times, what I hear from these small communities, people is like, you guys are always doing stuff for Richmond.
Right.
And that's why we started doing things through the Help program.
Right.
Even through opioid funding.
Yeah, we have reached out to the...
The other thing I would say we don't want to lose sight of is Richmond is part of the county.
No, 100% agree.
It's half of the population.
But they also have their own funds.
They do, but proportionally, so do the, so do the towns. And so I'm perfectly comfortable with buy-in through participation. I think it's gonna take more than one year because...
I agree, too. I think I...
In year one, there won't be any projects completed.
And, and we have like two months. We have two months in year one, so.
I, I think, I think if, if we say that we're making this three-year commitment, and obviously council needs to be involved because they'll have to approve the funding. But a three-year commitment on behalf of all of the towns and the unincorporated areas and, and we work diligently to have some successes in the first three years. And at that point then, we come back to, here's what we've been able to do. We need, we need this kind of funding. We need participation at, you know, I, I go back to the Regional Planning Commission. We put participation on a 20 cents per resident of the, of the county model so that, so that everyone, all six counties were participating at 20 cents per resident. And over time, that went up to 40 cents per resident. But even, you know, 40%, 40 cents per resident, or pick a number, a dollar per resident for economy would be $125 in there, something like that. And, and we make it, we make it possible for everybody to participate. If they choose not to at that point, after demonstrating what it can do and making it, making the cost manageable to them, then I think we, we have some decisions to make or the board has decisions to make with, with input from the key, the key financial supporters, so. I think it's important. I think we should do it. I think, I would say three years is enough time to test the model, to see if it works, to see if it can work in Wayne County. And, and we take, take that first step. Obviously, again, we need to see council to support that.
I think maybe we should have a conversation, maybe a workshop with council. Get a, see where they feel before we make, my personal opinion, I'm not willing to make a motion at this point until we-
And that's fine.
Oh, council.
And it, it would be irrelevant if they choose not to.
Exactly, exactly.
So let's have that conversation.
And I like the idea of, you know, let's, let's look at the size of the community instead of just a flat fee across the board. I really like that as well. That makes a lot more sense for the communities and maybe we get a little bit better buy-in with them.
Val, does that give you enough information to work from? Do you want to potentially come to the November workshop? Okay.
So just so I understand, are you considering increasing your contribution to cover small towns? Or you wanted that to be covered within your contribution?
I think it's within our-
I think so. So that would, that'd be 120,000 that we would start with.
Plus the 100,000 seat funding from Consolidated.
From Consolidated, which your board has already approved, but we have not confirmed that. Does that fit everybody's thoughts at the moment?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, I'll talk to Max Smith about that on the agenda for an upcoming meeting to talk through.
And let's also get this, maybe get the water tower thing moving. I, I think, I think with council, talking to certain council members, they're not willing to make any decisions, spend any more money on this until we get that water tower project.
We have had a couple more meetings on that and expect to have a, a final proposal to bring back to council and commissioners in, probably in November. We had another conversation yesterday, yeah, yesterday, so we're making some progress. And by hopefully our first meeting in November, we'll establish a little more information to share. We may want to have another executive session to talk about.
Okay, so just quickly, as part of that conversation at workshop, we'll want to talk about the board structure because right now there are only three seats resolved for the floor. If we want to provide more voices to the table, we'll have to negotiate either the city or the county potentially giving up a seat because I believe they, you have two appointments and the city has four.
For adding seats.
You can have a maximum of nine seats based on statute.
Statute, okay, okay.
So we'll have to discuss that as part of that.
Yeah, can you, can you send to us the makeup of the board?
And I would, I would say, just basically you saying that real quick, just, I would say reduce the cities and add ours since we're, we're adding communities. Makes sense to me if we're, that's just me.
I'd like to see what the breakdown is and we'll go from there.
Yep.
All right, anything else, Val?
Nope, that's it for today.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
When you ask her to come to workshop, I could see that she's thrilled to keep coming to our meetings. I'm glad that she is. This is, this is a highlight of your day.
It's the highlight.
No, it's good that we're all communicating and on the same page. I don't mind at all.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We can always give you the Zoom option and.
No, 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 I'd rather be here in person.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the property auction. And everyone involved in that has stepped out of the room, so should we take a, a brief recess?
Yeah, we need to find out where, because it's, it's until, we need to find out what's going on with the auction.
Let's take a brief recess and figure out what's happening with, with that and we will return momentarily.
We are ready to open up the bidding on properties located at 916, 918 East Main. As there has been the public intent notice to sell, there's a few short terms that were included in the public notice and I'm going to read through those and then we'll quickly open up the bidding and talk through the process that's going to happen if we get an acceptable bid and then the process to lead us up to closing. So under the terms, and again, this was all within the public notice, the board of course had procured two appraisals of the subject property and we're going to offer those to you here this morning. Number two, the minimum bid for the subject property has been established by the board to be $10,000 with initial suggested minimum bid increases for the first two rounds at $2,500 increments. Again, that is just initial suggested increments and such subsequent incremental bid increases as myself, the auctioneer deems reasonable. Number three, there is no reserve beyond the above stated minimum bid established by the board, but the apparent high bid resulting from the auction shall be subject to confirmation acceptance by the board, which acceptance is expected to occur by the close of business day on the date of the auction, subject to state statute that we'll cover here in a bit. Number four, the board reserves the right to reject all bids, including the apparent high bid received at the auction sale and/or waive minor errors in irregularities in the auction process. Number five, the successful bidder at the auction shall receive title by good and sufficient warranty deed executed by the duly authorized officers of the board. The board will provide the successful bidder with an all to owners title insurance policy and the amount of the total purchase price procured at the county's expense from the title insurer authorized to conduct each such business in the state of Indiana and selected by the county, containing only the usual and customary standard exclusions, exceptions from each insurance coverage and any easements or encumbrances of record. Additional title endorsements and/or simultaneously issued lender's policies shall be the expense solely of the buyer. Then item number six, the successful bidder shall accept the subject property in the as-is, where is condition without express or implied warranties of any sort passing from the county and/or other warranties or titles included, but not limited to warranties of habitability, warranties of the property suitable for leasing, warranties that the subject property is free of asbestos or any other toxic or hazardous material. Item number seven, all bidders are charged to make diligent inquiry to ascertain that their intended use of the subject property if they are the successful bidder, complying with all applicable zoning, land use, soil compaction and/or other legal or physical conditions or restrictions. Item number eight, the subject property will not be sold any person who is ineligible to accept the transfer of the title thereto by virtue of provisions IC 3611116. Item number nine, at the time of registration participation in the auction, any bidder who intends to submit a bid on behalf of a trust must identify each beneficiary of the trust and each settler or person who is empowered to modify or revoke the trust. Item number 10, possession of the subject property shall be provided to the successful bidder at closing. Item number 11, the apparent high bidder at the auction shall tender the auction, auctioneer by the end of the day, a cashier's check or money order payable to the county in the sum of 10% of the total bid price to secure the county that such bidder, if successful, shall close on the purchase of the subject property in accordance with the terms and conditions of this notice. Item number 12, the seller shall take place, or closing shall take place after compliance with the procedural requirements of IC 361113, which Mr. Cross is saying we expect to take three weeks, so we'll enter into a purchase agreement today, subject to this, again, the procedural requirements, IC 36111-3B, at the reasonable convenience of the county's successful bidder at the closing agent scheduled by the county. Successful bidder shall pay the entire purchase price in cash at closing by certified check or bank wire draft as required. So at this point, we've got the two parcels, they are being offered as one opportunity to buy, 916, 918, the terms are set here, again, it will be a transferred with a limited warranty deed, right Ron? Limited warranty deed on this. So with that, we're ready to open up the bid here, I need a minimum bid of $10,000 to start it. $10,000 now $12,500 to $15,000, $15,000 to $17,000, $5,000 to $20,000, $20,000 to $22,500, $22,500 to $27,500, $27,500 to $27,500, I got $25,000 out of $27,500. $27,500, $27,500, $27,500, $27,500, $27,500, $27,500, anybody else? Anybody else? We got good clean terms here, I got a good bid of $25,000 with $27,500. $27,500, $27,500, anybody else? Anybody else here? Certainly appreciate both of our bidders, appreciate the time you put to be prepared here for this morning, anybody else here at $27,500? $27,500, $27,500, $27,500, I don't know why I'm looking around, $27,500. Got two people vested in the bid here, $27,500 going once, $27,500 going twice. Sold here at $25,000, all right, we appreciate your bidders, we will get the purchase agreement put together.
We're ready. All right, thanks for sticking with us everybody. So Ron, let's talk a little bit about the auction and what the next steps are. We had a high bid of $25,000.
I think we're also going to put together a simple purchase agreement that'll be signed today and on tender of a 10% earnest money deposit. Meanwhile, I think as per the notice, the commissioners now understanding who the buyer is, what the price was, and the conditions are those that were in the notice, so I would recommend that the commissioners approve the offer, apparent high bidder offer to Mr. Eastman as bid, subject to compliance with post auction proceedings.
And that is Eric Dimick Eastman has the bidder, the bid was $25,000, which obviously exceeds the minimum bid of $10,000.
And it was greater than the combined, either of the two.
The estimates of that. So Mr. Eastman's going to bring out that 10% to Bob today.
Okay.
And then Andy will send me a copy of the agreement, so I'll have you look at it, I assume that needs to be signed by a commissioner.
Yeah.
Depends on when it is.
Do you want to authorize execution by the vice president? If available. Yeah, it's just a ministerial act, it doesn't need to be done.
Right, okay.
I'll make a motion on Ron's recommendation.
No, I'll make the motion.
Okay, we want you to arm wrestle to see if he gets to make the motion.
Well, he'll be signing it.
Subject to all the conditions of the...
Yes, basically what Ron said, right. I want you to say that.
It can be a quick turnaround.
On Ron's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second to accept Eric Dimick Eastman's bid on the parcel. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now, I need a motion to authorize the vice president to sign on behalf of the commissioners the purchase agreement.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that motion.
I just think it feels comfortable seconding.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, let's move on, we've got Ron Cross.
Don't have a whole lot for you, obviously, I think we found out that the properties we thought we were selling to the city are problematic and I don't know if we're ever going to get to the bottom of that, so I guess the lesson learned to be learned is what can we do going forward and not make the same mistake. Just recall, these are three properties that I think were often intended to be offered to the city for use conveyance for infill properties that were out of town. We thought we owned the properties as evidenced in the wording of the resolution that was passed July 30th, and it turns out that we didn't own them because they were put up for tax sale, it was past tax, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, right.
Had we owned them and had the tax deed...
They would not have been...
There should not have been any taxes that would have, you know, they would have, the prior accrued and current taxes as of the tax sale, which is 24, would have been eliminated. So I think we have to, I don't know that we need to do a full title check, but I think at a minimum, and I think, I don't want to overreact, a unique situation that we did, identified properties that this year that we were going to have for tax sale, or actually last year wasn't...
October 24th.
October 24th, we're going to have a tax sale, then the last minute, relatively last minute, you know, a few weeks before the sale, was canceled.
No, that was the deed sale that we canceled.
Deed sale, that's what I'm talking about, right. So I don't think any of the deeds got issued that we had expected would be issued.
Including the ones that we had to get for the sale today.
Well, and, you know, particularly the ones that we just got to selling off, so I don't know how and why that happened, but that was an abnormal situation, normally our deed sales go through pretty much, that's how I conducted them without any hitch, so. hitch, so...
So, so the fact that two of these, or all three of these properties went through the tax sale...
Tells me they could not have been titled, or either that, or if they were titled in Commissioner's name, there should have been a certificate of air issued by the Auction Office, wiping out prior accrued and cracked taxes.
Okay. So what are our options to fix this?
Well, as to the one that's sold, I don't know that we have any standing or options. Two of the parcels did not sell in this tax sale, so we will get a certificate of purchase for those, and just talking with the folks at EDC, perhaps the simplest thing is just to let, and there's a third parcel they've expressed an interest in, but also did not sell.
Did not sell in the tax sale.
Include these in our deed sale.
Okay. Which would go into April of next year?
Deed sales, I thought...
Deed sales are in the spring, April.
Let me, I was gonna get a timeline, statute.
Okay, well, why don't you look at that and have a recommendation for us?
A quicker, you know, I think a lot depends on what the folks at EDC wanna do, but a quicker approach would be to follow what we did with Phil Reed and give an assignment of our certificate of purchase, and they can act on that, but the timelines and that, I'd have to go back on the statute.
Okay. Well, if you can look into that and report back to us next week, we can work with EDC and see what we need to do.
Obviously, we got the cart well ahead of course, whether you wanted to push or pull, didn't really matter, we did have a cart.
Well behind, one of the two. Okay, what else have you got?
That's it right now. I contacted the sheriff, and I got her back, I think he's been out in...
Harry's telling me he's working on it.
Whether he needs assistance with the petition that was filed on behalf of a former Florida resident to be removed in the sex offender registry. We don't have any direct involvement in that, but the sheriff does have some level of responsibility, as does the Commissioner of Department of Corrections. So when I appeared, I looked for the Department of Corrections, and so I contacted the sheriff and said I offered to appear just to kind of buy time, and I got her back, that's not critical, I still owe you the contract, the ECTV for one month, six and sixty thousand.
Okay.
In terms of the ambulance, it does not expire until...
Four years.
Twelve thirty-one, twenty-six.
Twenty-six, correct.
That'd be it, that'll be on us.
We need to start...
Much quicker than we...
We need to start in the spring.
I don't know what, I don't know what our information tells us, has been success or issues with the program, if there are any issues, is Reed happy, I mean, I don't know, I mean...
You're happy.
Huh?
We're happy.
We're happy.
Matthews is happy, response times are well within the standards, so there are no issues from that perspective, but we'll...
So that's really all I have right now.
So the process would be again to verify the requirements.
I think we need to look at specifications, probably the next step would be to take those specifications, make sure what it requires statewide is required, and then you look at them, then I think, I don't know who's involved with monitoring the program, if anyone in our end...
Nine one one, so Matthew.
Matthew will be the one to talk to to see if there are any issues, if there's anything that should be addressed.
Right, okay, good.
Jeff, you recall the president revolving on, Todd had on, we did a subordination of judgment we had in the fund for a bill out, a former borrower, committed a judgment against him, some refinancing, we agreed to subordinate Selena revolving on for this judgment for a down, for a, a volume of ten thousand. That subordination agreement signed, they like it recorded, so I'm gonna have to go to Selena and beg that you take my word for it, that you really did sign it, you may have to go over.
I can be up there too.
With your head on some kind of document or book, appies or whatever, get it over eyes, I'll get that to Selena.
Good.
That's all.
Alright, any questions for Ron? Steve?
Yeah, just a couple things, not much change from the projects that you heard the report for, the various projects last Thursday night, just a couple things. We're still online, they're still in schedule to have this room, have the processor and speakers next week on Thursday and Friday, and then the front entrance, still moving slowly, the light installation continues, they've got the anchor bolts in, I think they're working with RBNL now to work through the issue with the foundation base, and will there be a period of time where we don't have lights on Fourth Street and Target? Yeah, 'cause remember, we gotta, they'll have to switch over to a metered, but I'm, how long is that?
I...
Limit that to a day or two, or... How much? A day or two. Yeah, that would be what I would expect.
Okay.
Now, I haven't said that, but sure, that's about what it should take.
Okay, well, get it done.
Yeah, here's the report on the prox card system this morning, and then I have sent over the contract that you and council agreed to funding up on the west side in here, so we're some documents for us to review and then put that out.
Who do you think will be the timing on putting it out from here?
I think, I would like to think first weekend December.
And so, is that a project they could do over the winter, or would they wait till spring?
They could certainly do the fence, depending upon the, and depending on the weather, if they can get a pretty good couple of weeks, they can pay for some concrete too.
Well, and is there, is there any repairs to the concrete? Right, under where the fence would go that would need to be made before they could put up the fence, I was thinking, it comes pretty close.
Yeah, it comes close, I don't think I can tell you right without looking at it, I don't think I've looked at that, but they could also start putting their retaining wall, depending upon whether you accept the alternate as a complete drive-through, they can start on that portion as well. The issue's gonna become is the disruption...
Right.
For the delivery of the prisoners, that's something that's gonna be...
We'll need to have a conversation with the sheriff, and Randy's already indicating that, we need to have close communication.
Jeff, based on our conversation this morning about crosswalk, since we're already gonna be over there working, can we do an alternative to do a curb cut there?
It's not just a curb cut that Endot would require, well, we were talking about all about a crosswalk across Third Street, and while we talked, it's been a while since we had that conversation with Endot, and they were gonna allow us to put one in, but it would be totally at our expense, as I recall.
I mean, I remember they, at that time, they weren't unless you had a mid-block crosswalk.
That's what I thought, but you said, 'cause I thought they said, no, they can walk down to the left or the right, or to the left, down to the light.
I misremembered what happened, and I thought they said, we could do it, but we had to pay for it.
That was the side, that's the sidewalks, just repairing the side, and the Third Street sidewalks would be at our expense. But the crosswalk, they...
Thanks for bringing that up.
Well, I was just thinking, if they allowed it, then we might as well look and see if we got workers out there to do the curb cuts or whatever it was, but if they say no, then...
They're responsible for the curb, but weren't responsible for the sidewalk, and they wouldn't allow us to put the...
They're responsible for the sidewalk, but it's not in their maintenance.
They're just not prepared to do it now.
Yeah.
But they said we could, if we wanted to.
Of course they could.
But, okay, thank you, that clarifies, I was wrong, I apologize. I'm gonna have to call some people and tell them that I misspoke.
I was just thinking too, if we're doing a curb cut anyhow for the drive, widen that there a little bit and take the crosswalk.
The drive won't, the curb cut won't be widened, it would be the drive that's in the, we use the curb cuts, there's two curb cuts there.
Already there, but I was just saying, if you widen one section out of the...
Well, and I don't think it's the curb cut, I think they don't wanna have a crosswalk mid-rug is the problem.
That could be. Nor do they want us to have another drive wide.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause there's too, it's too many for the short span between the two of their sets, and I can revisit that with them.
It wouldn't hurt, might as well, maybe they've had turnover.
And garage, yeah.
Give a different answer.
It may not be an issue next year, 'cause we can switch parking, 'cause now we can have everybody shift down to park over in front of the Well Care Building.
Yeah, potentially.
So they're right there by the sidewalk, that's a possibility.
And then, you heard Michelle give a report that she's gonna be attending a conference next week in Plainfield, you heard the gist of it, I do have a request for a hotel rate increase for that conference for the Veterans Office, and the, at the Courtyard Marriott, Marriott for the ninth of October twenty-ninth is two ninety-two-ten.
I'll make a motion up there.
We have a motion, also a second, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
And then, you got a sheet before, it's got the cards that were auctioned, that, online auctioned, there was three police cars that we put in, and that's the results of the auction, and I think it's still good.
Yeah, how's that play out to the other ones that we sold?
It's right in line.
Right in line with them?
Yeah, right in line with that, and it's also right in line with what we used to get at our local auction, but this is a cheaper, for them, this only cost us five percent, the other one person cost us ten, plus, we don't have all of our manpower involved in the auction.
This is, this is a good deal.
Yeah.
I agree. So, for the vehicles, it's a good deal, but are we accumulating stuff?
Yeah, so, we've been accumulating, obviously, stuff as well as furniture, intent was, was to move the furniture to the way it would room in basement, that doesn't seem to be coming to fruition very quickly, so we're gonna have to kind of change courses with what we think we're gonna do, I'm not sure what that course looks like, especially with furniture.
And I think Steve and I had some conversation with the clerk about our filing challenges, and one of those being that one of the giant rotary file cabinets that they have in the courthouse is no longer working, and they're so old that parts are not available.
Automatic motorized.
Yeah, and so, the fix at the moment is to remove all those files and put them in the basement, in one of the rooms that we cleared out with our billion-dollar project scanning documents, that's not the long-term solution, clearly, and there are four other filing cabinets that are the same age, the same type, and are obsolete, and when they do finally break, they won't be able to be repaired, so I think using some kind of manual system to crank those shelves around is not a good answer, very dangerous, and, you know, potentially have injuries if we try to do some of that, so we told them not to do that, and to move those files. We'll keep looking at it, if you have questions, wanna take a look at the situation, there are several rooms that are mostly empty, I think part of the issue is that there are files that are eligible to be destroyed, that haven't been destroyed yet, you need to, I think we have that throughout all of the departments, to some extent, out of sight, out of mind, and they're parked in a room somewhere, and they don't have to be dealt with by the office, but ultimately, we end up with all of the space being filled, and we have record upon record upon record that is eligible to be destroyed, just haven't been, because it was easier to let them sit where they are, so we need to, we need to force the issue on some of these, and make sure that our own records are up to date on destruction, and then work with the other offices to make sure that they're doing the same, so, you know, I understand the feeling that, well, I'm not sure I'm ready to part with those records, because we might need them next year, but next year comes, and you still don't need them, and the next year comes, and you still don't need them, and they probably never will, and they're eligible to be destroyed, so...
The price of replacing those file, those electric, or those large filing cabinets, I know is a big number, do we know what that is?
We don't know the exact number, we do know that originally those were paid for out of four D money.
Right.
The original four D could pretty much be spent on anything they wanted to, but that falls into the category of records perpetuation, and so they had money that they could do that, they don't have that money now, and so if we tried to do that, it would be with general fund money, or a few other options, but not many.
Right.
So, we'll look at that, but I think, I think probably, in my opinion, at least the answer is to make sure that we're adhering to the records destruction cycle, and make room available as it becomes available, and look at trying to keep records that are most relevant as close to offices as they can be, you know, to the force, so there will be some expense.
Yeah, this, I think this is a topic we need to start talking about, because it's not gonna be better.
With all departments.
And we started hauling those records, files, that's in that one file cabinet to the basement, and, you know, it's kind of like something you take out of a box that expands once you did it out of box.
Oh, yeah. It's been restrained inside that filing cabinet.
And so, we've taken, Billy Brownson started carrying, started inking out this file cabinet, and it just wasn't workable with the hand crank, because it wasn't made to do that, that was just so good, wanna work on it, but the hand crank, it's just a worm gear, and the ratio is so low, that to make it move, I mean, you had to crank it hundreds of times.
Tons of files in there to begin with.
Well, we're figuring, we're estimating like forty-five thousand files, because there's twenty-two...
Shelves.
Shelves, and five thousand shelf, that's a hundred thousand, and so what we've taken, we've stopped taking down because that particular room is getting full, and she doesn't have the manpower right, the person power right now to put them in some retrievable organization, so we need to keep talking about this, 'cause this isn't gonna get better, it's just not.
Record storage, I mean, what did we spend, what was the scope of the first iteration of digitalization of our files, it's been over a million dollars, but what did that do to the Auction Office or...
Well, so it was intended to scan all the documents that did not fall under the destruction category.
So the ones you gotta keep.
Yeah, and that got pretty, pretty done, but what happened then, with the change in administration, the destruction part didn't occur, and then there's been a change in philosophy of what they want. And then there's been a change of philosophy of what they want to keep. And so the problem now just is building back up to the way it was before with, with keeping the documents. Now, we have Dale's got one room that used to be the, the welfare offices.
Right.
That you can enter off of Third Street.
Right.
And you can get to it with that, that flight of steps right by the Casa Inn. He's getting that pretty well emptied out to take this furniture too, so people could access it.
Okay.
There's still some old ones in there, some old books that need to be changed up. But this, this is something we've got to address.
Well, I think we really thought that going through this process would, would solve the problem and apparently it's not going to. But the, the company that did this for us estimated that there were ten million documents that they were going to scan at essentially ten cents a piece. And, and we had them put in the contract that not to exceed number, which was one million eighty-two thousand dollars. And at ten million documents, they ended up scanning twelve point three million documents because their estimate was that far off. And so they, they had to do it for the not to exceed number of one million eighty-two thousand. They're, they're concerned about their process and now we, we have issues with our process. And how do we make sure that we don't accumulate that many more documents again?
Well, that's my question is, is that not just for the clerk's office, but all offices? Do we have a policy or, or, everything scanned now? I mean.
Well, when you say a policy, you know, statutorily, the, the, under elected officials, the office holder is the custodial of those records, not, not the commissioner.
Right.
And there, there's a state destruction schedule that they, that they can follow without any approval. Used to, you had to get approved from the state, well, now it's on the destruction schedule, you just have to, you have to take up.
Or can we strongly encourage these departments?
Absolutely. I, I think.
I mean, is taxpayer running it?
Or you simply say, we have no more room in the basement, you're gonna have to keep them in your office. And that might spur them to, to start more scanning.
Scanning. I mean, let's face it, it's, it's modern times now, we shouldn't be keeping.
Well, some of them, you have to keep. Statutorily, some of them you still have to keep forever.
Right. Which is ridiculous on its own, but okay.
Yeah, just like the H R department. They pretty well scan everything now and put it in folders and get rid of paperwork. Because there, there just don't want to move that office to keep everything that they generate. I know that there's some other offices that are doing that, but then there's some that don't.
And, and I gotta admit, I'm, I'm one of them. Does it scan? I like.
Well, I know, it's a pain in the butt, I, I have to do it for my business, I have statutory, keep records seven years. And I scan and everything I can, have an electronic Word file, but I still have to have a hard file. Well, it's keeping seven years of records is a pain in the butt, filing cabinets.
It's been one of these things that, you know, we, you know, take care of our H V A C units and we find new cars and we replace carpets, but we've just not done a very good job of managing our records. I mean, we, we, we manage it, we keep them.
We keep two of them.
I don't want you to be mistaken that we're not, they're accessible.
We have what we need to do.
We have what we need to do, but there's a better way.
Okay. Let's go to Mike Sharp. And we'll come back to you, Steve.
Okay.
Hello.
What do you have for us this morning, Mike?
Good man.
Good.
Uh, the first thing is would be, we're really gonna want to purchase a chipper box to do our chip and sealing. So this will be a bid process to go out. This will probably come in at four hundred thousand dollars plus, something that we're gonna be looking at purchasing for next year. But they're about five to six months out. So that's why we want to kind of get the bid process started on it, so we can get them in and then get it ordered and then we, we rate for next year's seal. I think the last one new with that we purchased was in nineteen eighty-eight, so it's been several years ago. We still have that chipper box. We're looking at trading one of them off to nineteen ninety-seven, so it's twenty-nine years old. The reason why I'm gonna keep the older one is because there's not as much electronic little dials and things on it. So when it sits and we're not using it a lot, it's not gonna go bad. So the mice getting into some of these things that sit around. So we have three chipper boxes, we typically use two year-round or strip sealing and so forth. And then we have the one for backup. This one that we're looking at now, and we can't find good used ones, this has an extendable box on the front. So now they're stationary, they're about twelve foot on the front. This one would go down to twelve foot, but extend out to twenty-four foot. So then when you go to do a seal job, you could actually seal the whole roadway and not have a joint in the middle on some roads. For Wayne County and, and that's what most counties do, but for Wayne County and the amount of traffic we have and the residents and so forth, some of the roads, that's not gonna be applicable. Because then you gotta, you're gonna have a car in front of somebody's house and they pull out and you're gonna have a mess. So certain roads we can do it on, but yet wider roads like Union Pike or Old One Twenty-two or something like that, that right now we have to make three passes on. So we did Union Pike this year, you gotta make three passes on it. Last year, we borrowed Randolph County's when we did part of Union Pike. And we were doing it in two passes, didn't see how it worked, but then I wanted to use it on our strip sealing. So we have a strip sealing program. I'm hoping in maybe five years that the strip sealing program will kind of go away as money comes into it, we can do some more sealing and paving and so forth. Uh, but there's gonna be a period that we still gotta do it. So I wanted to check it to make sure we can still do our strip sealing with that pack of the box and it work well with that. So this will kind of be something that we're looking in the future on how we're gonna maintain in the future and, and go forward. But we'd like to put this out for a bid and this is in, I guess that we have the money up for next year on the budget wise for this.
Okay. Ron, have you seen the bid packet?
I did, I mean, it's not ninety-six A, but I think the specifications are fine and stuff. I think there was a copy of the non-conclusion affidavit, which.
Right.
Might want to include that, that should be included in the bid, no, it is, nevermind. It's that third paragraph, so no, I'm.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
I mean, he's, he answered my question about the funding, that was my main concern, I mean, I'm not gonna micromanage what he needs. So if, if he needs this and he's got the funding for it, I move for approval to send it out for bid.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Got a document for all three signatures. There was just one copy of that, wasn't there?
Yes.
Okay. All right, what's this?
Uh, so this then would be to purchase a single axle dump truck. We have two single axle dump trucks right now, we use them in the additions and some of the smaller roads, there's two different routes for that. So we'd like to purchase a new one and upgrade it, the, the old one we want to keep right now, kind of our backup spare. We have a pickup truck with a full-size sander, stainless steel sander that goes in it. So that's kind of what we use for backup if something goes wrong. So my thought is, is to keep the current single axle that we got, it's got some age on it and so forth, but yeah, it's still functional and good. But purchase a new one to upgrade that one with a used truck. The dump truck then, Billings and Grounds had put in a work order for one of their, I think it was the Blue Ford pickup truck, tailgate wouldn't work right and so forth. Looking at that, I think it's, it doesn't have a lot of miles on it, but we can't fix the tailgate, it's shot so bad, it's wore out. So my thought is, is to go ahead and transfer that pickup truck that we have, it's not one I would, was gonna get rid of, but since theirs is bad, we would transfer that pickup truck since it's set up with a sander. Put that sander in them, I talked to Dale, my suggestion to Dale was is then they could come out to our facility and get salt, pure salt, put in that bigger sander. They got a place to park it inside, it's not something you leave, load it all year round. So before a snowstorm come in, they could get that, keep it for a few days and then once a week just kind of cycle it back out or something. But then it would save them on cost as far as purchasing bag of salt and then your laboring putting it in into these little sanders.
I, I just have a question because I'm not sure I understand what you're talking, are you saying sander? So is that, is it a mixer then? Is that sand salt mixture?
It's a sulder, I guess I should say.
Okay, I'm like, what's a, why are you putting a sander in the back of the?
So they put a mixture down, but.
We put a mixture down, but for the parking lot, you would want a pure salt. They did use a salt-sand mix, I think, before.
It's a spreader, is what you're saying.
Yeah, it's a spreader, basically.
You kept saying sander, it's like, okay, what?
Yeah, we call them sanders, that's just what we call them, so sorry. But yeah, it, it would fit all the pure salt into it. And then we can buy it at a bulk, which you're buying way cheaper than what you're buying in the bag, plus the labor of putting it into the truck and so forth. Uh, the sander would probably, once they fold it up, I mean, it'd be facilities more than once. So that was kind of my thought as far as doing the transfer on that. We don't use the pickup trucks as much in the wintertime as we do in the summertime. And then we got three trucks, I think, on schedule for next year to purchase. And then we're just, we pulling this one out a little sooner, it's not one I would have pulled out even then, but yeah, this is still decent truck. But since it's set up with a sander, I think it makes more sense for the county to do that.
Steve, that makes sense to you?
It does, makes a, makes a lot of sense.
So, all right.
So the three, we got some quotes on this, this would be a used truck, but the one I'm gonna recommend would be from Ken Labile, or I don't know how you really pronounce that, Truck Sales. It's a, for seventy-five thousand, seventy-three dollars and fifty cents, that includes the title fees and some of that stuff, that's why it's kind of a little bit of an odd number. But the Freightliner M two one oh six is the model, two thousand seventeen with only sixty-seven thousand miles on it. Um, it's a little bit more, but if you look at some of the ones that are above it cheaper, the mileage on them is two hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred forty-eight thousand. So to get a lower mile truck, it costs just a little bit more, but I think that would be our best purchase. Plus, this one is set up correctly for the PTO and the hydraulics to be able to work our sander. If we bought one of the other trucks, then we're gonna have to spend more money to upgrade the other parts of the truck to be able to work in our system.
So it's, it's not the low bid, it's, but, but there are other factors, including the, the mileage and all the used vehicles. So this is, qualifies under our special purchase.
I mean, it's really, it's based on, on, on the comparisons that he's had, it's almost like a source. I mean, it's, it's, by used equipment, it's, it's going to have a lot of subjective factors.
Okay. All right, questions?
I'll make a motion to, to approve the, the purchase of the twenty-seventeen Freightliner and with the trade-in.
I'll second.
What was the estimated cost of that?
Seventy-five thousand, seventy-three dollars and fifty cents.
Now, this does or does not have a trade-in?
Does not, because we're gonna keep our, we're gonna keep our single axle and then transfer our backup truck to the ground.
So, without the trade-in, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of, of the Freightliner.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the last thing I had was, we talked about the Covina tractor, I did get a price from Rogan, who, he had already said we could buy the tractor from them, they were at a little price of sixty thousand nine hundred. Uh, he finally came back in with a trade-in value of six thousand dollars, with a trade-in value, so then it kind of comes back to you guys if you want to trade the tractor or if you want to try to go to the auction.
And we've been kind of thinking about that, mostly what we have done in the auction is, is cars and pickup trucks. Kind of give us an opportunity to test the waters. And I think your, your thought was that it, in an auction, it probably is a piece of equipment that could bring that much or more.
Right, I, I think it would bring at least that much, it might bring a little bit more, it just kind of depends on how you wanna deal with it per se. The, the other one, like on the chipper box, we're gonna try to trade that in because if I had to go put that on auction, not too many people are gonna want to buy a chipper box, so.
I'd say we try the auction.
I'm inclined to try the auction.
I agree.
I'll make a motion that we sell to auction.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to sell the tractor at auction. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. So Steve, you want to give Mike and work out?
I can see there would be, we had two other trucks, I think that we haven't been auctioning either.
Right.
Is that a constant platform or do you go in cycles, three-day cycles or?
Just whenever we have available. And the terms are always the same. Anything else, Mike?
Maybe.
All right. Thank you very much. In a follow-up meeting last week, have you had a chance to put together a description of what you're doing out at the Corn Center and a cost?
Yes, well, they sent that to you.
You already sent it to me?
Yeah, okay. I emailed it to you, we emailed Simona and I emailed the.
We got it.
Thank you.
Lastly.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Good enough, thank you. Thank you, Mark. Okay, Aaron.
Yes. So before we put the opioid settlement committee in, we put together a scoring committee, put out the opioid funding to the public stating that we had some dollars to spend. And again, I really appreciate the stance that we've taken at the county in that we, we find the right places and the right reasons to spend that money and spend it on the, what it's intended for. As opposed to backfunding our general fund. And I appreciate the stance that we take on that because, I mean, that's what its intent is and that's what we should be using it for. And I really appreciate that, first of all. But second, so I put before you what the scoring committee came up with, with the applications that came in, the application process was the month of September. We need to get seven applications before you is an explanation of the ones that got awarded money, the reasons why, and the ones that did not and the reasons why. So in the restricted fund, it was available currently right now, two hundred and forty-five thousand, six, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. And the unrestricted available fund is forty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. So with the restricted fund, we, we picked three, the scoring committee consists of five individuals. We did the scoring, which is a non-biased type of scoring, we set the scoring rubric, we sent that out with the application so everybody knew where we were and what we were looking for. The scoring committee put together their scores, three groups qualified under the scoring committee as, as far as the higher scores for the restricted funding. And we didn't fund all three of those that they're full asking, but we did fund them where we thought that was reasonable and made sense for Wayne County and for the opioid, opioid funding.
Let me ask you a question real quick.
Yes.
Based on that, that you didn't fully fund them, can they still continue to operate or do the project that they needed without being fully funded?
Yes.
Did you guys ask that?
Yes, and, and like, for instance, one of them was asking for a two-year program. We ended up funding just one as opposed to the two years, because if we would have done that, we would not have been able to fund three different areas. One, one ask was for like the Narcan, it's not, they didn't ask for Narcan, but they asked for the equivalent of Narcan, which is readily available free through federal and state government. Yeah, you can request that for free about anywhere and receive that for free. So the funding for that, we, we basically said, you know, we're not gonna fund that one, we know it's available for free through different, uh, areas. So that, that's some of the things that we looked at, that's some of the things that , uh, why we didn't fund, the committee decided we didn't fund it fully a hundred percent on a couple. Uh, one of the, uh, restricted groups, uh, that we, uh, funded, we did fund a hundred percent, we felt like it was a program that was, uh, doing very well, they asked, what they asked for was, uh, basic, um, stuff, um, basic, um, for their program that's already existing, that they're already doing, help extend their program. Um, and, uh, we have looked at sustainability with these groups, with the scoring rubric, uh, and, uh, so, but those are the funds that, uh, so, and I'll be glad to share the three, um.
Well, I was gonna ask you for transparency, I think we should.
Hundred percent, so.
These are the three highest.
These are the three highest scoring, uh, in no particular order. Um, Bertha Five would ask for seventy-one thousand, one hundred dollars, we just agreed to award them sixty-five thousand, uh, dollars, uh, for their ask. Bridges for Life asked for seventy-five thousand dollars, and we awarded seventy-five thousand dollars to them. Uh, and then Reed Health, um, asked for one hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Uh, we agreed to award them eighty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
And that was part of the Boys and Girls Club?
That was part of the Boys and Girls Club, they are partnering with the Boys and Girls Club, uh, for, uh, education, uh, and, um, to high, high schoolers and also to their parents, uh, so, which is, we thought was very critical, uh, and that's, uh, like, has been explained in the past, uh, the federal and state levels are really looking at education, the education piece, and, uh, they really put a great application together, and they're already doing this, um, part of it. Boys and Girls Club's already in the school systems now in Wayne County, and, uh, Reed Health is just helping them to assist them, honestly, and, uh, to put a health worker out there to, for education purposes within the schools, uh, for, for that.
And the recommended reduction from the request is based on that, uh, they asked for two years, and you're recommending one year?
Yes, uh, for the Reed Health, uh, that was the reduction on it. Um, and we, we all agreed, if, uh, after the first year, if their continued success, they can always come back and ask next year for another year, if that's something that they're looking at. But also, we're looking at organizations to be able to sustain, uh, their programs, uh, because this money's not gonna last forever, and it dwindles every year. So, I mean, that's something else we looked at. Um, the, the shortfall of Bertha Five, uh, the main reason is, again, they asked for like Narcan, uh, equivalent, and, uh, we decided, you know, that's readily available, and, and you can get that in other sources for free. Um, so that's why the reduction in those two. Uh, now the unrestricted, uh, we did have one unrestricted, uh, ask, and that was for Milton Police Department, and they asked for nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and the committee scored that and agreed that, uh, we would, uh, give that a hundred percent. Just the fact that, uh, what they asked for and what they're trying to do, uh, we really appreciate, and it's, it's, uh, you know, it, as law enforcement goes out and continues to work and tries to help, uh, combat the opioid addiction problem that we have in Wayne County, uh, we really feel like that, uh, not only, uh, law enforcement side, but then help support one of our small communities in Wayne County, we really felt really strong about that, the committee did, uh, so that's why they, we recommend the awarding of, um, that money on, on the unrestricted side.
Okay, thank you. Um, I appreciate all of your work on this, and, uh, it's, I know it's a lot.
You made Mary Ann proud.
That was good, that was good.
This body camera's the gun you're talking about, Michael?
Yes, yes. With that being said, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendations, uh, for the funding of this used opioid money restricted and unrestricted.
I will second that motion, and just say, you know, clearly you're the commissioner with heart, so. Oh, I think Mary Ann said. Uh, anything else you wanna share on where we're at with opioid funding?
Um, so I'll, I'll just tell you, so the total, the total then, uh, what we would be spending out of the restricted would be two hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars, sixty-six cents, which leaves a remaining balance of twenty-two thousand, five hundred, thirty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. And the unrestricted, uh, we'll be spending nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, which will leave a balance of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents, which will roll over into next year, um, and add it on to whatever we receive.
And we should be finding out probably in the next couple of months.
Well, probably in the spring is usually when we kinda find that out, uh, so, but I, I think, and the committee talked about, you know, it's okay leaving a little bit of a balance in there.
And you're thinking, uh, a once-a-year cycle on.
Yes.
Applications in September would become kind of the standard.
I think that's a good idea, so, cause we, we have all the money allocated by there, or.
Yep.
Received, so we know how much we're getting for the year and.
And I think it, it makes it easier for.
Process, applications after the cutoff date was thirty days or less?
Yeah, actually, the application process ended, uh, the end of, uh, September, and so we, we looked at the applications, there were only seven, so it, we were able to get through it fairly quicker, right? Uh, as opposed to, I know the other time, I think there were maybe, what, thirty or so applicants?
There were several more.
Uh, so it was a little bit more manageable, uh, to get through on the timeline, timeline on this one.
It was September one or whatever cutoff, or on September thirty, you should calendar it order.
Yep.
So for, as far as administration, how are we distributing these funds then? Are we, now that we've, well, we haven't voted yet, well, once we vote and approve it, does Bobby just co-check or have the auditor co-check directly to these groups or how?
Uh, I, I believe we would have to submit it to the auditor's office to be able to release, lease those funds, is that be correct?
Yes.
Right.
Voucher and.
Yes.
So relatively quick then?
Yep.
Cause I know they wanna get moving on all this stuff, so.
And, and I.
Would we need a memorandum of understanding with these not-for-profits?
Need one, I mean, you, you base the process on a claim, on a claim or you're not? Off of them, oh, well, you have an invoice or anything like that, I mean, or just, it'll be the.
What'd we do, didn't we do it in the past though, memorandum saying that, that they are gonna spend these funds based on what their application was? Probably not a bad idea, just to, just hold them responsible that they can't, or I didn't sign anything, I wasn't gonna spend this money on this.
Yeah.
Well, and I think there, I think we also need to add in there that, uh, please report back to us once your project is complete and.
Or if it's abandoned.
Yes, and, and exactly how.
Cause we have to file a report back to the attorney general.
Correct, we, we have to report that annually, uh, so we need a, a follow-up, uh, report as well on that. Um, and then also, there was a stipulation with the Milton Police Department, that the equipment that we are purchasing through this become the property of the town, which is there in ten, but we wanna make sure that that is followed through on it, so we need to make sure that that is.
Did their application give you a, a list of equipment?
What they were doing? Yes, and, and I'll make sure that that is available.
And there's a budget for, for each of those.
Yes.
Let's, uh, let's work on the follow-up paperwork that we need.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, at least, we don't think we know what it's gonna look, what the federal audit, uh, this is gonna look like on the opioid settlement. Cause when we checked it out at the outset, there was not a lot of direction given, but so I think the best we can do is make sure our paper trail is as clean as it would be.
Right.
Agreed. Did we do an MOU the first time?
I thought we did.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay, I probably got a template in it.
And, um, I'll make sure you get all that information, uh, that you need from me and, uh, to be able to move forward with the presenting, because, you know, the committee did agree, you know, we're, we're excited about, uh, getting this money out to these organizations, and we really want them to have that money so they can get rolling with their projects, so.
Do you feel the structure of the committee was appropriate for what may have is different levels of analysis that's gonna be required next year versus, you know, I mean, I know you can predict.
Right, I, I believe the committee was very well-versed, very well, um, uh, diverse and, and the great, great conversations, uh, from a lot of different areas, which made it really good, and, uh, so.
And we worked with, uh, with the health department, you know, they have an advisory committee as part of the Health First Indiana process, which is a requirement, so instead of creating a total new, uh, advisory committee, we worked with them, uh, and, and then just put together a, a scoring committee, uh, to make a recommendation back to the commissioner. So I think the process worked well, again, I appreciate your leadership on this, you did a great job, and, uh, we look forward to you continuing in that role for many years to come.
I think we need votes.
I need to make a motion.
I made the motion.
We seconded, we have a motion, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, why don't we stay with, with you, Aaron, and, uh, let's do the claims?
Yes. I have general claims, uh, dated ten twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, at federal payroll taxes and retirement, dated October seventeen, twenty-twenty-five, payroll fringe benefits dated October seventeen, twenty-twenty-five, inflex garnishments dated October seventeen, twenty-twenty-five, make a motion to approve those.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the claims, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. So we have a, a slight change in the process for approving the minutes, or at least a recommendation that would change that process, and, and it will actually take us two weeks now to, to get the minutes approved, is that?
Yeah, ten, well, two weeks.
So it'll be the second meeting to approve the, the minutes for, for this meeting, it'll take two more weeks.
They're still available for public inspection in draft form, just needs to be noted.
Right.
Not on the minute drafts.
Okay. Okay, um, anything else, anybody? Aaron, anything else?
No, I have none. Steve, disruption, uh, for the courts with your West Side projects, oh, in the courthouse.
The only, I don't anticipate a disruption other than noise potentially, the potential noise and schedule, you know.
Delivery of prisoners, obviously.
Well, delivery of, delivery of prisoners, kinda what I was talking about, is, do they still have the ability, if they so choose, to virtually conduct the initial hearings?
I, I wonder whether they're using that much anymore or not, do you know?
I don't know.
I don't.
I, I think, I think it still exists, but.
I was gonna say, I thought that was kinda left out there, even though it was part of the COVID, uh, procedures that.
You know, I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, they may not, I mean, they may not want to, so I guess that's the only matter they have, if they wanna.
All right, anything else?
I just, um, are we gonna meet next Wednesday or not, or are we gonna be just discuss this? I don't think we have anything that's urgent, do we?
I'd like to go ahead and meet if.
Of course you would. Meet every day if we'd let you.
Could we?
I think he misses us.
We do, we do. It's long living here. You would prefer not to, I prefer.
Unless there's something urgent that we need, absolutely need to, I mean.
Is there, is there something on the calendar we need to meet for, or something coming up that we, I, I know things pop up left and right daily, I know that.
I've got some to-dos, but they're all, will be, if there's anything like a proposed policy to you for review before it's even ready for consideration, so I, I mean, I'm, I don't have.
Nothing time pressing.
I'm aware of it.
There's, if there's nothing time pressing, I don't have a problem not.
And that just gives us an extra week to complete the auction process.
Okay, we will cancel the meeting for next week. Bobby, make it so.
I'll make it so.
If there's anything, nothing else, we will adjourn.